...strong. That is all of this coming for you in the mighty name of Jesus, with thankfulness as his name. I ask, Lord, that you just bless this meeting, God have your way, and let peace reign here in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
All right, roll call. Scott Ferguson here.
Michael Green.
Tim Cram here.
Roxanne Tufsky again here.
Tracy Donovan Lavalet will not be here at this. Everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
From this meeting?
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as
Written?
From
I'm sorry.
October 28th, 2024.
Who's seven?
Mike.
Mike. M G, Mike Green.
Yes, we got Mike, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
These are the
Oh, wait a minute, I'm gonna do these. So I have the non-pub minutes from October 30th, 2024. I'm going to make a motion that these be sealed for five years. I need it seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, Scott Ferguson, and that's to affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a board member. Uh, Roxanne, yes?
Scott Ferguson, yes.
Michael Green, yes.
Tim Cram, yes.
Okay, so five years, all right. Then I have the minutes from tonight. I We're not gonna seal these minutes, so there's no motion to seal, so these will just be available, and they'll be attached to the regular minutes. I'll give you that, so you don't need to put it in the thing.
Next up, we have tax refunds. Uh, these were the ones that were submitted last week. Uh, they now have supporting documents with them. Everybody would like to take a look, see?
Oh, you can start down that end, I just wanna fill this out.
Just to let you know, on the attachment, it shows the institution, the financial institution that does the escrow.
Oh, okay.
But it's the resident that we're refunding, 'cause we
Yeah, they both paid.
I was told that mention that.
So I'll give you that, do you, to take, then give me that. And I'll take this back.
This is you said.
Oh, yeah, we'll get that, yeah, that's new business. Put that under the new business.
And what is that I'm talking about?
It's the hazardous wa-
Oh, yes.
That you just gave me, it's the hazardous waste or turnkey or whatever. So there's the minutes. Tax refunds.
I'm gonna read my
So, well, we're waiting on the signature, so if we wanna add to the agenda for item 12, it's just the household hazardous waste day. I'll just, um, if you wanna move along or whatever, if you're fine, I'll sign. Yes. Like this. Look, the answer is on here, and I actually don't see why it's not shown here. Why, let me see. This is bound. There's two entries.
Okay. There is a, uh, so this is from the city of Rochester. They organize it kind of regionally for the northern half of Stratford County. In regards to hazardous waste day, uh, they're set by some timelines as far as the grant application process. So they would like a commitment letter from us no later than January 2nd. It appears their anticipation funding-wise would be $1,475.68 from the town of Middleton's behalf. That is based on the hazardous waste collection numbers that they received from May of 2024, as it pertains to people from Middleton partaking in this.
So what it's saying is, we can either choose to do our own hazardous waste day, or we can participate in theirs, and we typically participate in Rochester's instead of we have, 'cause we don't have any means here to do a hazardous waste.
The other thing that they also put in here is in regards to budgets, and they understand that budgets don't get approved until later, so
Right.
But they are guided by timelines. So at this point, I, I personally, we've been doing it for years. I'm not aware of any Middleton residents having an issue with it.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and sign and put in the budget for $4,000
One thousand. I'll second that.
Scott.
Any discussion? Paul and Taylor?
Aye.
Yeah, 'cause we only had last year budgeted $1,000, so
You wanna put as a point of contact?
Yeah. I'll put you as a point of contact.
Oh, thank you.
We're the one that issues the check, we just sign it. So you can send that back to, make a copy and send it back to me?
All right, and then go to payment later?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, there's just a spot for a good contact. All right, getting back on track. Old business, New Portsmouth Road maintenance, winter maintenance. Uh, after lengthy discussions back and forth in the last meeting, along with a good amount of research by the select board members and sometimes people that got involved, we tabled it with having the current highway director go down, take a look at the road, uh, and anticipate what, if anything, would need to be done to the road. Uh, Tuesday morning, I did go down there with Dan, myself and Dan. Uh, we drove the road, the road was actually, in my opinion, very good shape. And anticipated about four, maybe four hours of, of chipping, roadside brush, tree limbs, what have you, that had fallen down. Uh, and then potentially bringing down a bucket of gravel just to fill in some, some very minor potholes in the road. Based on that, Dan was figuring a few hours. Uh, I told Dan it would be safe to say a day, a day's worth of work, and you could have it all done. Uh, Dan did agree and said he absolutely, within a day, he could have it all done. And have the road up, up to stuff enough that they could plow, should the, should the board vote to continue the maintenance of the road. So, with that said, I think we actually tabled your motion.
Your motion, yep.
So that motion is still on the table.
And that motion is?
To continue the maintenance for this year and have a war article drafted, asking the town if they want to continue the maintenance of New Portsmouth Road up until
It's 50 feet after, it's 50, the way it was written in 1978, 50 feet after the Snyder property.
To basically maintain the whole road.
Maintain the whole road, and then let the, like I said, have a war article and let the people decide whether or not they want to continue in March. If they decide to continue, that way it's very clear, and if not, we stop in March.
Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I think the warrant article should read as such as that was presented from 1978. 'Cause that's what's in violation. That's just my opinion.
So where did you get that? I'm sorry?
I think the warrant article that gets put on the warrant should be read as what was 1978, 'cause that's what was originally voted on.
Well, according to what I got here, there's three ways you can change a class six highway back to a class five. Uh, number one is by petition. Um, number two is voted at a town meeting, and C is maintenance of the class six highway, which if used, two, five years, then it automatically reverts back to a class five highway. So I'm thinking that the selectmen at the time, whenever they did this, that they use that as their reason for
No, there's been no warrant articles since then, and there's been no vote.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be a warrant article. Right here, if they regularly maintain it for five years of war, it automatically goes back to a class five highway.
Right, until a new warrant article gets presented.
No, no.
Yes, yes, till a new warrant article gets presented.
According to this right here, it is R S A 229, 705, comma, 6, that if the town maintains this more than a seasonal basis, in suitable condition, be year-round travel for at least five consecutive years, and the highway automatically reverts back to a class
Right, but the, the The, the warrant article is completely separate from statute. Okay, so if the, if the, if the, 'cause the town didn't vote to, uh, what's the word I wanna use? Declassify your road. The town, warrant article, voted to discontinue road maintenance 50 feet beyond the Snyder property. That's, that's what the warrant article read.
Yeah, that is correct.
So, although you can make the argument that because the town
Maintained it for the last almost thirty years.
Well, the town didn't maintain it, per the warrant article, for, what is it, almost tw- almost 20 years. And then Rick Washburn was appointed at highway director in 1996, and miraculously, we started maintaining the road.
I'm pretty sure it was maintained before that, but
Well, when I asked you the last time, you said 1996.
Well, that's what, that's what I had heard of that.
Right, so that was, that was when we got a new highway director, Rick was appointed in
It says since before 1996.
Right, so, so I, I, I wasn't here in 1996, so I just have to presume that it was 1996. You yourself said that you maintained it for a significant period of time, from when you moved there, basically until, until potentially 1996.
Yeah.
And then in 1996, we got a, we, we, Rick Washburn was appointed as highway director, and at that point, presumably, that is when road maintenance began there, as far as plowing and maintenance.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I don't think it was his direction that did that, it was, uh, from the selectmen who once told him to do this.
We have nothing
But again, I, you know, I, we don't have anything.
So that's why I would be, my see, I shouldn't, that we drop a little war article, the maintenance continues until people have access.
Right, I just want him to understand the difference, though, because
Well, I, I don't, I don't agree with that, but I see, this is the way, this is the way it's, this is the way it can get changed.
A warrant article is how it gets changed. The legislative body, the legislative body makes the decision as to how the town can proceed, and if it's put on as a warrant article to discontinue in the legislative body, which is the townspeople vote to that, that's the will of the people, that's
I, I agree. Now, again, it says how to change from class six to class five. There are three ways by which a class six highway may be changed to a class five highway. A is by petition, B, voted at a town meeting, and C, maintenance of a class six highway.
So what will happen is, it'll go on the warrant article, if it passes to discontinue, that will supersede the five-year maintenance.
And the prior warrant. Because again, we weren't on the board, there's no discussion of these, uh, the documentation to support anything. We're, we're going off of the unknown, if you will, at this point. Why that changed in 1996, nobody knows. And we can't find
Maybe they just like me better than you guys do, I don't know. They just came up and decided to take care of the road.
Quite possible, quite possible.
Again, when, when this, 1978, when this warrant article was passed, there was no persons that lived on this particular section of road. They would, would have been required to maintain the road from Snyder's driveway to up around Borough Spot. That was all of New Portsmouth Road that, again, nobody lived on it. That was why they managed to change it in 1978. 'Cause Butler and the rest of them didn't wanna maintain it, because it was all bulldozer work, because the road was not, it would wash out in the springtime, and the four-wheelers would kinda maintain it as much as anything, so
Right.
I mean, again, that's, that was why they
Makes perfect sense.
Certainly does.
So, uh, so with that said, the motion, the motion on the, on the floor right now is to continue maintenance of the road up until the point of a new warrant article going before the town in March, a town meeting, and a vote coming from the townspeople. Is it?
Yep.
Correct?
That's fair.
All right, any other discussion?
You need to have it seconded. Did somebody second it?
I seconded.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't hear, no, I didn't hear the second, sorry.
I, I, well, I take that back, I seconded it at the last meeting.
Oh, okay, sorry, thanks.
So that we can move on to the discussion.
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion, I will call that motion to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So what are you, what are you telling me now?
So at, at this point, the majority vote of the board has voted not to continue maintenance
At all?
Beyond the Snyder property.
At all, is that what you're saying? From like now on, I mean, since like, eh, last April?
Yeah, I'm saying.
I'm sorry?
I said yes, that's what Steve said.
I think at this point, it's, it's a matter of the, the previous warrant article, and like I've explained to you before, it, it becomes an, it becomes an authoritative, uh, issue, because we, we, in all honesty, have absolutely no legal grounds to overrule that, that previous warrant article. Once, once a warrant article is passed by the, by the people, we, we don't have the ability to overrule the people. If, if the people vote to change things within the town, once that vote is made, that's the way it is, that's why you have the say at town meeting when it comes to budgetary issues, when it comes to adopting roadways. That's the whole purpose of a town meeting, is so that the people, the people have, have a say.
What about the ours state of these properties?
Which one? He referenced a couple. About the maintenance of it?
Yes.
So again, we, we talked legal on that, and legal's, legal's thought process on this is that you can't be held accountable to something if you're unaware that it exists. And unfortunately, the board had no idea that we weren't supposed to be maintaining beyond the Snyder property, nor did the highway department. The previous, the previous highway director brought Dan around and told Dan, "We plow up here." Nobody had any idea of that. It wasn't until this all came to light in April and May of this year, and discussions began, and we started to pull previous minutes, warrant articles, what have you, based on Mr. Alfre's request, that we were able to find that we weren't actually supposed to be up there.
Is there any, is there any, um, big work on any FEMA funds that would have been used on New Portsmouth? According to my notes, that there was, at one time, there were numerous times FEMA funds were used on that portion of the road, so I mean, I can only assume that they were, again, again, realizing that it was a class five, not a class six highway, because they had been maintaining it.
I, I can't answer that today, for you know.
Do we have an official map of town? What roads are maintained, what roads are not maintained? There used to be one.
So, so the highway department does have a list of roads that was given to them from the state that designates what the road is. Designates whether it's a public road, a private road, a non-maintained, I believe, non-maintained road, uh
I don't have a state map, I don't have any information, but there used, there used to be a map, but
The state has it, 'cause that's how we get allocated block grant money. So any road that the town maintains, it, it goes towards the block grant.
Say, say the town voted to, uh, well, they voted to discontinue government, uh, block road there by a consecutive way, and so that should have been taken off the maintenance thing and actually been assisted. The great town voted to, uh, has it, my point, my point is, is that the town votes to, uh
I don't think there was a town meeting vote on discontinuing that road. If I remember correctly, the, uh, it was a swap with the selectmen, um
We don't
Something, something about, uh, just taking over the road, um
I just don't know how the local votes are, are transmitted to the state, I don't have any information, but I guess that's not, not even, not even really
Well, I can tell you on the list that, that the highway department has, it does actually state the gates and bars of the Snyder property and everything.
I think that's happily a recourse, R S A 231, yeah, it says five years of maintenance. Another way you might have a different game.
Totally. All right, new business. Election Day luncheon.
Uh, I'll take
Uh, when will be the minutes that you ready for, all right?
They have, we have five days to get them posted. Five days. Um, so tomorrow's election is at the high, uh, at the high school, gosh, ooh, at the elementary school. Um, we are going, the idea is that we are going to order lunch, uh, probably, I presume, from Crowley's, so what we would just need is everybody's lunch order probably by nine, so that we can get it in in time. Um, that's, that's the, and the town will be paying for it. Or you can bring your own lunch. Yes. Yes, oh, you can bring whatever, it was just
A long day.
Yeah, no, you can bring, but it's just the lunch portion, yeah, 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 right, no, I, I mean, I have a couple things, but I mean, just the general So if, so if you didn't like anything that someone brought, we are going to order for that, yeah. So we'll be looking to Yeah, I think we have, we're gonna You don't know?
I don't know.
Oh, we're gonna, I think we have access to the kitchen area, I think out back there, I would hope that it's refrigerated, maybe not, I could be wrong. So maybe bring a cool with some ice.
All right, uh, number eight, holiday luncheon. So we get this on here to decide and discuss a date for the holiday luncheon or, or dinner for town employees.
Similar to what was presented last year, right?
Yep.
So I think that's, so I think the two dates that would be looking at would be the December 7th or December 14th.
I can tell you right now, the 7th works far better for me than the 14th.
Is there anybody here on the 7th, in this building, do we know? I'll see if I can find it. If they're, uh
I think it's the rec.
No, I think they're the 14th, I think they're the 14th, hold on, give me a minute, wait for that, I'm getting there. Is the 14th, right, yeah, that's what I thought, so we're We're gonna go to next month. month. There's somebody here at 1:00 PM. I can't. One to four. So it might be a little tiny.
Can I ask you a question? Yes, you will have access to the kitchen.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah. I mean, I think we get it here at like four, sort of five.
Right. So I mean, I think the 7th is probably better. At least I, I think, but. Yeah. Um, but I don't, what's your, Mike, any comments?
I think either day will be fine.
How about you, Tim? Either one?
Oh.
So let's tentatively go with the 7th. Okay. For now. We haven't got that far yet. Maybe, what time, I mean, tentative, a tentative time, I guess.
I think last time we did it, what, at 6?
Okay. I wasn't here last year. I wasn't in town. So was put 6:00 PM is kind of.
I think, I think we opened it up at 5:30 and dinner was served at 6:00 or 6:30.
So we'll, we'll kind of go with that same thing. So we will be looking for somebody to kind of spearhead that. Scott, I know, did it last year. I think I'll, I'll ask Tracy if maybe she'd be interested in doing it.
Yeah. I have, I have no problem working with somebody as well.
Unless you, either one of you wanna step in down there? All right.
Would you guys do for dinner last year?
What's that?
They had like pot barbecue. Was it barbecue, right?
We catered it.
Okay. I was just curious. Sorry.
But it was like barbecue, I think, or something.
From Crescent City Bistro.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, number nine, November 14th meeting, Veterans Day. It is a holiday. Will we have a meeting? Yes or no?
No.
Is that Thursday? The 11th?
Oh, so it should be, whatever date it observed on. So it's probably the wrong.
The 11th is when it's observed, Veterans Day.
Right. So we won't. So it's really, yeah. So it should be the 11th.
Yep. My bad. Sorry.
That's okay. Good catch. And it's a Monday. We won't have a meeting because the office will be closed.
All right. Town Cloud, number 10.
So we met, um, so we, Kim and I were over at the, um, NHMA annual conference and, um, we were speaking to Town Cloud about coming in and, uh, well, potentially going over to that software. And cause now we're in the budget season, so I think that it's kind of circling back, um, to do accounts payable and payroll because currently we have Sage and it's not all that user friendly and it doesn't interact with, um, the understanding is, and this is just, I prefer that they come in and do another demo because I know you, Scott, you started whatever, but I think they've made some advances in it. But, um, it had the ability to be able to, um, pull, pull files that are, that happen over in the town clerk, tax collector's office and to upload them right into the, uh, system without having to do double entry, which is kind of like what we have to, we're entering them again. So manually, they get manually entered again into Sage when you pay and when, um, it gets booked. So everything would be talking to one another electronically and, um, and such. And they did comment that they would give us a 10-year contract for the same price, I think is what they were saying a six-year contract would be. And it gets paid, you pay it like, like once every six years. So you pay the contract and then, I don't believe there was a monthly fee. I don't know. I'll have to double check that. But I do know that they'd said that they would give us a longer contract. Um.
I think they were gonna split out that yearly fee.
Yeah, I don't know. But, but I mean, so they were gonna give us a 10-year, 10-year contract or like on, based on the six-year price. So, but I think it's just worth having them come back in to do another demo.
And I think they, we should have more people.
Well, I, I, yeah, definitely. I think I was out of town or whatever, but.
Yeah. But like even, um, have the tax collector.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, it probably would be, well, I don't know when they'd be willing to come. Um, but, so let's just reach out and see what their availability is.
Do we know if they're doing payroll yet?
Yes, they are.
As of Jan- January 1st.
Starting January. Yeah. Yeah. And my understanding is they'd be able to directly, um, interact with Avatar, which is what they use in the town clerk tax, as well as iCloud, which is what they use for, um, tax payments and such. So.
Are there any communities locally that use that?
No. A lot of them, so I did reach, so while we were over there, I did reach, I did talk to MRI. And I think, uh, we're the little fish in the big pond with MRI because I believe a lot of towns that have BMSI, I'm not sure if I said that correctly.
Yes, you did.
Um, usually use, and I'm not gonna get this right, gov, something, they use another soft, or there, there's another software that's involved that is discontinuing. So they're all scrambling and so they're all going to MRI. And so we can't compete like with all, we can't compete with Nashua or whatever. Cause I was talking to the guy and he, he really wasn't like, he wasn't looking to try and sell. He wasn't looking to make the sale. And I'm like, oh, that's kind of interesting. And, but as I was talking to some of the other people from other towns, it's because, uh, the BMSI users, um, needing, need another outlet and they're all going to MRI and MRI can't keep up with the demand that they're getting from all these.
For the whole state of the management job.
Yeah. So, yeah. So I was trying to, you know, I was trying to find who else, cause I was asking who else was available to potentially do, you know, government, you know, basically we'd like government fund accounting software for government because it should make our auditor's job easier as versus having to do, like she has to do all this extra entry work because we don't use like a government software, you know, I mean, a government user-friendly software. So.
There was one more targeted by.
And so in MRI, the base, the guy said, "Well, just to convert your data from like Sage to, uh, MRI is like $50,000." I'm like, "You don't even know how much data we have." "50," he said. And I'm like, "Well, you don't even know how much data," you know what I mean? So I think he was just, I think he was throwing the numbers out the edge of big, big, just discourage. And I'm like, "Okay, I'm, all right. I feel defeated here. I guess I'm not, you know."
Yeah. He didn't want to speak to me either because I went over a separate time.
So I, you know, it's like, I mean, maybe in a couple of years they'd be, because they'd get caught up with all these other towns. But like I said, we were the small, you know, we're small peanuts compared to other towns that they can get. Who was the other?
But we only have two years worth of data to transfer over. Cause we do current year and one year prior. Um, Edmund or, um, Emon, um, I got an email today. So.
Okay. So we can maybe, we can take a look and see what they have to offer as well.
Yeah.
But we want to try and get all that situated because we're, you know, obviously in the middle of the budget.
Yep.
And maybe we potentially may be able to, if, I didn't think it was a, it was, I think it might've been 18,000 that.
Yes.
Uh, Town Cloud was talking, but that would cover 10 years. So maybe it might be worth like the warrant article to do unassigned or something, you know, it's, but, um, but really was, we're looking to make the change in right now is kind of when we'd be looking at, uh, to get the numbers together and stuff.
I will print out the, um, proposal too.
Okay. So more to come on that then.
All right. And last but not least, the Sunrise Lake Watershed Management Plan Update.
Thank you very much. Um, just wanted to keep the board kind of up to date on some new developments on the management plan. And as you're aware of, we, we received a grant to implement the plan, which includes some engineering studies, some construction work and so forth and so on. And we finally have turned on the faucet, if you will. And what I mean by that is the money is, is available. Uh, we're beginning to, um, develop some teams to pick some contractors who will be doing engineering studies, so forth and so on. Um, we had a meeting and I put with your minutes, copy of our minutes of our meeting, pretty, pretty detailed in terms of the update, but I just kind of want to go over this real quick. Um, the grant is, uh, is about a two-year grant. First thing that we have to do is we have to pick an advisory team to take a look at a list of contractors that will be doing the work. And then we pick the team, raise these contractors who we're gonna get contract, contracts to. So we're trying to put together a team of committee members, board members that are interested to be on this, more than welcome members from the public. We want to keep it down to about five. And, uh, so that's our first process. Once we get that set, request the proposals for the four projects to be sent out to a variety of contractors. And the one that's managing the plan is Stratford Region Planning. Uh, the grant is about a two-year timeframe. Total grant money is a hundred thousand, of which in-kind is 40,000. In-kind meaning volunteer work, uh, from the town, from the people, from wherever. As of, uh, the end of September, the committee has generated $10,000 worth of in-kind work, which is 25% of the required in-kind work. The committee has worked diligently on trying to implement the plan, work on the plan behind the scenes. We've issued two newsletters. We had a couple, two or three meetings. We've attended, uh, grad fairs and so forth. And so we're getting out there. Uh, people are beginning to know who we are and what we're trying to do. And I want to thank the board, Conservation Commission for their support in helping us move through this thing. Um, and we will continue to be developed along with the plan and our education. The plan is the education of the lake watershed, what can be done about it, how do we stop and reduce the liquids going into the watershed and lake. So, uh, we have some big plans for 2025. We continue to do that along with the projects. And the projects are basically a main garden down on, uh, shore, uh, shore, not shore, but on, uh, where I live down there, Hampshire Shore area. Take a look at the Lakeland Beach and the culvert that comes across the road, then it grows at the beach. And then a, uh, a further quality testing of the lake's water. And a look at stormwater management above lake shore and up in that area. So we've studied. So there's four projects that go on. Some of those will be data collection. Some may involve some digging and moving dirt, all in stock, nothing. But, uh, we're moving, twenty, that's, uh, Stratford Region planning. And at this meeting was Stratford Region planning, Kyle Hamilton and the, he's the program director for this project for Stratford Region planning. And Sally Sewell was the program director for this grant for TES. And they were very impressed with the amount of in-kind that we already had put in place. And so we're well on moving and having that. But I just wanted to give you an update. Um, there's some numbers in here in terms of, uh, actual numbers of the value of the grant and so forth. Just wanted to keep you in the loop. And again, committee, thanks to Conservation Commission and the board for the support, as people and members for, uh, listening to what we have to say, supporting our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you as well, John.
Thanks for the update.
All right. I believe that is all we have. So I will open it up to public comment.
Uh, before we go, I want to thank Rita Jones, Janine Van Gelder, Lindamo, and Jack Savage for setting up the elementary school cafeteria, gymnasium for voting tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
So on that is, so if everybody knows, voting will be at the school tomorrow from seven to seven. Just wanted to put it out there for people who might be watching as well.
Yep.
November 2nd, if I will, if you're a little time hold, if anyone would watch our inspection area, we have a short, a meeting and we provided a local, um, well-in scientist to come and speak to us. So everybody's in quite to be there. Roxanne, I don't think you'll be in for the time hat meeting. Are you, you know, are you gonna be out on the crowd?
Yeah, I'll be in.
If you have any questions or anything you want, yes, to have on the cover, I think, you know, just give it to, uh.
Yeah.
Or, you know, the conservation.
Yeah.
Is that, excuse me?
So everybody can follow it. No, I, I, no, no, no. I got there first on the count.
I thought I got there first then.
The ultimate goal.
We'll talk about that in a minute. Go ahead. Sorry.
The ultimate goal being, um, about the restoration, that's feasible, that thing in the area, the old culverts, it was actually upon, um, Dan's, um, Dan's suggestion, that goes out of there and, uh.
Yeah, that'll be.
You know, we want a three-day, people friendly, private land, ultimate.
Habitat. Perfect.
What are your positions?
We're gonna, actually that.
Well, that was one thing we forgot. And after public comment, I was gonna comment on it. So.
Thanks. Thanks, Adrian.
Stand by on that one. Or actually, actually, since you're bringing it up, we will. Uh, so the select board has put a, uh, a, a job posting together. And, uh, at this point, it has been sent out, uh, to be posted. So it will be on the town website.
Yeah. So Tim, can you make sure it gets on the town?
Thank you. I meant to ask.
And, uh, it's been sent out to NHMA. Um.
So now we'll see.
How, how about, um, sort of personnel policy? I guess, how does that work as far as it being posted internally first? Or, I don't, I'm just, what's the process? Yeah.
There, there is. I, you know what? I've read that, uh, probably a month ago. And I honestly don't recall exactly what it says. Uh, I'll double check that.
Thanks, Andrea.
But we, we do have a policy on that. Yes. Yes. Yep. All right. Public comment. Any more? Not hearing any other public comment? I will gladly take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, adjourn at 7:14.
All those in favor?